Welcome everyone to Buckingham Town Council Environment Committee. And we have two members of the public wishing to talk at the beginning of the meeting and then someone to talk on the BORG item later on. So I'd like to start off with Andy Savage, who contacted us a few weeks ago to talk about possibilities, hopefully for Bolton Park. And I think there's a presentation that Paul is going to show us, are you?
Yeah.
Thank you. So over to you, Andy. You've got seven and a half minutes if you need it.
I doubt that I'll need it. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Right. I hadn't appreciated that a lot of this work had been tried before. So forgive me if I'm going over old ground. This happened because I saw a video that popped up in Facebook on my link of a weird and wonderful vortex electricity generator. And I thought, oh, we have a nice river with some nice wares in Buckingham. I wonder if, I wonder if this would be suitable. Looking at the slide that's in front of us at the moment, basically it just takes us a side stream off a river, runs it through a vertical axis turbine generator in a rotation tank and passes down the river, obviously making use of the potential energy high, given by the height difference between the top and the bottom of the vortex. Do you want to move on, Paul? And this is what one looks like. I'm sure it could be made more attractive over time. Excuse me. Rough data that I extracted from the Zotletter website. We are looking, I believe, extracting the information from the previous study at Tanlaw Mill. We'd be looking at about a 10 kilowatt generator on that site. I've no idea what the heads are for Bolton Mill and for the Castle Mill where, excuse me. But you can see you can get 10 kilowatts out potentially, which is enough for 10 houses. And that is pretty much it. What happens next is down to your good selves. We can either take this forward or assume that not enough has changed since the last study done in 2009 to 2011 and assume that the cost benefit analysis is no better. Things that might have changed is feed-in tariffs may have changed. And there may be, or soon to be, government grants available. But don't hold your breath on that one. And I think that's about it. I know you've got a motion later in the meeting to consider these. And so I wait to hear from you. If anyone's got any questions, I will do my best to answer them. But that's about the sum total of my knowledge so far.
Thank you, Andy. And we're really grateful for you putting that forward. And I hope that the motion gets agreed later on on the agenda. Does anyone have any questions? No. Okay, thank you very much, Andy.
I shall leave the meeting and leave you to it. Thank you.
Lovely, thank you very much. And so next we've got the Buckingham Society. Is it David Childs?
Yes, thank you.
On their footpath by the play area on Morton Road.
Correct.
Thank you.
Shall I start?
Yes, please.
I don't know whether you all received a write-up that I sent to Paul and if he got it out. It just saved me trying to explain where it is for those people that don't know the area really well. You really need to walk the area to understand the proposal. But anyway, so this project was raised because there was a large number of people taking the risk of walking along Morton Road on the grass verge but outside the play area. Because we have HGVs and all sorts of things flying on there. And my biggest worry was actually children walking their dogs along that grass verge. In about June, I was advised by the county councillors that this was a project for the new community board. I had originally understood that the community board system was there to allow local proposals to be considered for funding. I've attended two road safety and cycleway subgroup meetings. And I've also raised a form for the product project with estimated costs. To cut a long story short, the response from Buckinghamshire Council Parks Department was, I quote, "In the event that the proposed path be implemented, the applicant will be responsible for its future maintenance and liability." This seems to me to exclude Buckingham Society from pursuing such a project. They're not set up for maintenance routines and so on and so forth. My estimate is about £2,500 material and about £2,000 labour. But I've not attempted to get a quote because I don't have access to the approved vendors list. Therefore, I'm here to ask Buckingham Town Council to support this project so that it can be considered by the main Buckingham community board at its next meeting. I accept that it may be that other projects in the community board area may be more commendable, but it seems that this is a project that is worthy of consideration.
Thank you. John, councillor Harvey.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea without any doubt. I guess the question I've got is, do you know who owns the playground? Is it us? I didn't, I thought it was owned by the developers.
No, it's owned by the parks and they maintain it at the moment.
Sorry, by Buckinghamshire Council?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, I've been like you then, I find it bizarre that they should wish to suggest that maintenance is down to the applicant.
Well, I think the proposal is to actually move a fence or not move a fence, but another fence up about two metres away from the hedge line so that the dogs and etcetera don't general things get in there. So there would be a two metre corridor that's on park land that they're saying they don't want to own anymore or maintain.
Councillor Stutchbury.
Can you please write to me and my Buckinghamshire Council address? Explain to me in detail what they've said to you and this criteria about they don't want to maintain it. And I need to talk to the cabinet member to find out what the validity of that is and whether that's the intentions going forward. Because you raised a very pertinent question. As you cited very well, the community boards are supposed to be there to allow local initiatives and to push them forward to throw the idea that the Buckingham Society should maintain footways seems erroneous and with disbelief. So I do think I need to, I need to not sort of get into the anger of this issue at the moment. But it looks very frustrating. We need to get to the bottom of this because it doesn't actually make sense. It's illogical and it's unfair.
I'm quite happy, I'll expand on the trials and tribulations I had to even get where I am. And I'll let you have a fuller experience of what's gone on, Robin.
I'll go to the cabinet member, Mr Nolan, I was talking to him today and see what we can get from him because I think he'll be surprised with that statement. I'm not saying he would support it, he seems a generally thoughtful man to me.
It certainly seems a good idea to have the path as has been put forward. And we need to find a way around it, don't we? So David will send the information to Robin, yes?
I will do, yeah.
I mean, the question, the question you want to ask, Dave, not the sort of question that I want to ask, if you understand what I mean.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Well, I think they may be in common because I viewed this as a trial on the new community board. So it's a good project to say, does it work? And at the moment, it isn't.
I totally understand, I totally understand your statements around there might be more worthy projects. But to stop a project becoming worthy is a bit tiresome, isn't it?
Yeah.
Councillor Gateley.
Thank you. Can I just ask a practical question? When you get to the northern end of your proposed path, isn't there a fence blocking your access through to that second phase of the development?
Well, it is, but that's part of the park fence. So all I have to do is take a couple of rungs out.
And make a gate through.
Well, I don't need a gate. What I'm proposing is a fence one metre long. So it would be totally open for people to cycle, walk or whatever down to the other two metre part of the phase one pathway.
Yeah, I was just wondering whether there was a barrier at the northern end, at the maid's morton end. But because I quite often walk along there and have had to walk across the playing field because you can't, you know, the access through isn't very good, whichever way you come from, really.
No. Well, basically, the one end, the photos are on the write-up, I think. One end has got a metal fence which just needs the bolts undoing and swinging back. And at the other end, which is the phase two end, it just needs the four bars taken down. And in theory, then you have the capability of cycling, walking or whatever you want between the two phases. But the expensive part is because it's a children's play area, we do need a fence. So there's about 60 metres of fencing that needs to be put up to isolate the play area.
Yeah, thank you for that. I could see the photo, but I, maybe I wasn't reading it well enough to realise that's what it was. I think it's a very, very good idea. I mean, anything that can make walking and cycling safer has to be a good thing.
Yeah. Thank you very much, David, for bringing this to us this evening.
Okay, thank you for listening. I'll leave the meeting, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Okay, so item one, apologies for absence.
Just apologies from Buckinghamshire councillor White.
Thank you. Otherwise, all the town council members of this committee are here. Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? No. Item three, minutes, to receive the minutes of the Environment Committee held on the 26th of October, received up to four council on the 23rd of November. Are you happy to agree them as a correct record?
Yeah.
Yeah. Item four is the action report that's been updated. Councillor Stutchbury.
Thank you, chairman. On the action report, I know that we, you know, the first one, nine stroke fifteen, we'll get the report on the football pitch is at a later point. But I really want to premise my conversation around the actions over the health public meeting. Now, this has been ongoing since 2018. And before Covid, we insisted we wanted a public meeting. There's various discussions at council and various interventions and various points on the journey. But the reality is, this was a motion of the town council to have a public meeting. It's not a very satisfactory position we have where we are now entering 2021 for a meeting that we promised in 2018. Now, if those who have a memory will recall that in, on the 24th of January 2018, the Health Service came to Buckingham Community Centre and had a consultation with us at 9:40 in the morning about your health, community care close to home. So that was under community hubs. And that consultation took place. There was huge amount of information gathered from the people who gave up their time and attended that public meeting. And at that, and there's absolutely nothing come back of any proportion or sense or anything from that meeting. So we know that there's been a further discussions with our group. And we know there's been further discussions with Wickham and the South areas in Buckinghamshire. But there's been no discussions here. I think the way forward, I'd like to put a way forward. We are in a situation where we can't for safety reasons have a public meeting. But we have to be innovative and think of ways around that. My suggestion would be that we do a public meeting in this way, that we ascertain the questions and concerns of the residents. And so we honour that part of our pledge. And then we ask the recipients, being Buckinghamshire Health Trust, Community Health, and of course, the GPs, which isn't the major issue here, to come to that meeting. And we ask them as councillors, the questions on behalf of the constituents. Why I say this is we can read those questions out, there's 17 councillors. I'm sure there'll be enough questions for the 17 councillors to read out. And that way, we can fulfil our role as councillors that we ask the questions with the public want answering about future healthcare in Buckingham and how to go forward.
This is on, sorry, Robin, this is on the agenda tonight, isn't it, under written term?
No, that's slightly different.
For us to agree the question.
No, sorry, chairman, I'm talking about the action list.
Yes, I am.
The item on the action list is on the agenda is about going to the HASK. Please don't confuse the HASK meeting with the public meeting which you voted for to actually take place. They're completely different metrics and matrix and different purposes.
Well, I'm sorry, but under the update, it talks about this meeting in January and us asking a question.
That is the.
That's on the action sheet, I've got it in front of me, Robin.
No, chairman, that is the HASK meeting. That is the HASK, which is the Health and Scrutiny Committee of Buckinghamshire Council, which we agreed in the last minutes, the minutes you've just agreed, where councillor Smith suggested a question in those minutes. This is not what we're talking about now, so.
Robin, that is what it says on the action sheet.
Healthcare public meeting is second item down on the action sheet.
Yes.
Right. This is not the same as going to the HASK, they're completely different portals. This is the public meeting that we all promised to have. If you allow me to.
What it says on the update is, members agreed with councillor Smith's proposal that written questions regarding the Lace Hill Health Centre be submitted to the November meeting if possible, or if there is not time, then to the January meeting. And further submissions are agreed at the next Environment Committee meeting on the 14th of December. So that is the update on the action sheet.
Chairman, if you'd allow me to explain what I was trying to get to. The fact is, it says, if you look at the start of the action list, it says healthcare public meeting.
Yes, I can read.
Yeah, what actually go into the HASK, the two things have been confused in the action sheet, which is very nice, but they are completely different questions. What I'm talking about is at the start of it, where it says health public meeting. And what I was trying to suggest, the way forward, where we as councillors can honour our pledge to the public by having a public meeting. Now, if members don't want to do that, then bring a motion to council with six councillors to say you don't want to do it. But I'm sorry, I'm trying to find a way forward which empowers all the councillors to honour the pledge to the public which we made in 2018. Now, it's just a suggestion of a way forward, which we've now got in discussion, the HASK, which is a completely different question. And that is on the agenda.
Chair, can I just clarify why the action report says it is? At the last meeting, when we discussed the action report, this particular item under the action report, there was a discussion, as per the minutes, around why the meeting hadn't happened and why an online meeting hadn't happened. And then under that agenda item, councillor Smith made the proposal regarding HASK and members agreed with that proposal. So that proposal was made during a discussion about this action list. And that's why it's listed under that, the action list. Whether that's everything that needs to be done about that action or not is for members to decide. But whether as councillor Stutchbury suggests, there should also be a physical meeting or online meetings for members to decide.
And councillor Gateley had offered to attend that meeting. Councillor Gateley.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say something like our town clerk has just mentioned. I think the two things have become confused because of the way the discussion went at our last meeting. And it might be helpful, if it's possible, to separate them out on the new action list so that the HASK is separate from the public meeting. Because I agree with councillor Stutchbury, they are two separate issues. But because they're both relating to health, they've become conflated. And I think that could be a bit confusing. However, I think the HASK is something that's ongoing and that we can attend and send questions to. Whereas the public meeting, because of Covid, is not, I mean, I agree with councillor Stutchbury. We mustn't lose sight of it because we did agree to have it. But with the current situation, I don't think it's viable to hold such a meeting. Can I just finish?
Yes, please finish, Margaret. And then I'm going to call councillor Smith.
Thank you, I do think it would be helpful to have that meeting. Whether an online meeting would be sufficient or whether we need to wait to such a time when we can meet in a, in a community centre or wherever together, I don't know. But we've got to be realistic when we make proposals as well. And at the present time, it's not easy to plan that kind of event. Thank you.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, yes, just to, well, I don't wish to repeat some of what's been said, but they are two totally separate events that we're talking about. And my suggestion previously, which is recorded in the action sheet, was to make greater use of the HASK because we couldn't seem to get a public meeting going. Although I am fully aware that the HASK kind of steers debate by insisting that questions only be related to agenda items. But they are two totally separate things. And if councillor Stutchbury's got a way round of bringing the, the public meeting concept to life, I think it's worth listening to. Maybe he could, maybe he could prepare a paper or discussion document or something or the other for a future meeting. But because it looks like we, it looks like that we won't be able to get that many relevant questions to the next HASK just because of the way they, they target questions to agenda items.
Councillor Harvey.
I guess I'm reluctant to move forward on having a virtual public meeting because I suspect that a lot of the people who are concerned about this, not all obviously, but a lot of them are people who are, shall we say, of an older generation than us. And doing something online like this, I'm not sure how inclusive that would be as opposed to a real public meeting where we can get back together in a room and so on. And I have to say, I think the issue ought to be, is anything happening? Is there anything to report in terms of progress? I think positions are well known in the town about the need to keep a, some sort of satellite or maybe even substantive surgery within the town. That position is well known and I think well understood by everybody involved. The question is, I think, are the, is the practice advancing on their plans at all anyway during the current times? Because I think they've got their hands full a little bit with vaccinating a few million people and also sorting out issues to do with the pandemic as well as everything else that on top of at the moment. By hunch is it's gone on to the back boiler. There will be a limit, of course, in terms of when the section 106 agreement will run out in terms of the land being available for such a, for such a building. But I honestly think our best approach is to try and extract information from the HASK at this stage and not try, if we have, try and have a virtual public meeting, I think we could be using up valuable, I don't know, valuable resources. And with a view that when we try and arrange it perhaps in a more, in a more ordinary way, we'll have burned our bridges a little bit. I'm mixing up my metaphors and analogies rather badly at the moment, but you get my gist. I would say still hold fire. But in the meantime, find out, ask them straight, what's happening? You know, where are you up to in your plans? We would simply like to know. And then on that basis, plan a way ahead. Because if they're about to go live with, you know, cutting into the earth up at Lace Hill to build a new medical centre and so on, then it would be good to know that. But if they're still two years away from it, because they haven't even got the, you know, proper arrangements in place to do with the financing, which I think is the major issue, then we don't need to worry about having a public meeting at this stage. Certainly one that's, that's virtual, is my view.
Councillor Stutchbury.
And just to come back to the contributions following. And councillor Smith, as usual, makes an incisive contribution about bringing something forward positive, which I think is the way forward. What people are, the agenda item wasn't very helpful to the chair, which meant I didn't actually quite finish what I was saying. My view was, we are advocates for the community. And because we can't do a virtual meeting with members of the public, my view was, and I will bring something forward to the town clerk. I did have a brief conversation about my concerns today with him, is that there's 17 councillors who could take the questions in writing from the members of the public and we could meet on their behalf. It's not an adequate way of doing it, but it would be something because it's really not acceptable to go two years without pursuing an action. And that's where I was going, and we keep confusing everything round the Buckingham hub, the health hub. Health questions for Buckingham are threefold. They are Buckingham's Health Trust, they are the community hub at Lace Hill, and they're also community health at Buckinghamshire Council. They're threefold, let's not just keep concentrating and banging on about the GPs, the doctors. They will, that will happen if it happens, at the time it happens. That is part of the question, but it isn't the real question, the way healthcare is delivered. The seminar which some of us attended in 2018, and I know councillor Smith was there, was about community hubs being health. And that's never come back to us. Yet, as I said earlier, they've had conversations in other parts of Buckinghamshire about care and how they're going to proceed it in the community, and we haven't. Let's not premise all our eggs on one issue. As rich and enthusiastic as that issue is, that is only part of the question. So I will take councillor Smith's wise advice. I'll put something either for a new, another meeting or I'll put it to council, one or the other. Because I, I think he's right, we need to have something in front of us that we discuss. And I'm really glad we've discussed it because at least we've sorted out the action sheet. At least now people know there's two aspects of it. And at least we've established that not all the healthy Buckingham is going to be delivered by the GPs. So that's a step forward. And having dealt with these things from 2005, when I was involved in an action group with Ed Grimsdale and then councillor John Barnett because of the fears of the hospital, and we even ended up being mentioned in Hampstead. So I've got some history in this, so I will not stop my interest in it. But going back to what councillor Smith said, I think is the way forward.
Thank you. Councillor Smith.
If we're ready to move on, Madam Chair, could I mention the, the item at the foot of the first page of the action sheet?
Yes.
The cattle pen's finger post. I banged on about this at countless environment meetings and the delay in getting the new finger post installed. I do accept, of course, that the green spaces team do have a lot of other things on which are priorities particularly at this time. But I would remain colleagues, remind colleagues that this has been actually outstanding from spring 2017, which is roughly when AVDC granted us, gave us the money or agreed that we could spend the money that they had provided on having this done. So we're nearly four years into having the money and still don't have the new finger post in position. That worries me.
Yeah, something that I chased when we were putting the agenda together. And I think that there was an answer from Lee.
Yeah, going out to get prices to get the finger press installed. So as soon as that comes back, we'll proceed with it.
Thank you.
If I may say so.
Yeah.
I mean, we have heard that before. I do realise that there are delays caused by Covid in getting some tenders in and that. But four years?
Councillor Stutbury.
This is something which is no longer on the action list, and has never made its way on there, is those of us who were involved with the campaign to finally get the lace hill slope put in, the replacement of the steps, will recall what a terrible, difficult situation that was. What we are presently in the situation is that those will be adopted by Buckinghamshire Council. Now, what we do need to find out is, are we going to do the repairs on them? And what the situation is? We've had it discussed in committee. It's not on the action list. It was a big effort of us to get the actual, then the council to finally acquiesce and agree that putting a slope in for disabled people wasn't too offensive. And we managed to get it in. And we all turned up for the photograph, probably about 12 or 18 months ago, and opened it. But the steps in the slope area is breaking up, and it needs to be repaired. And we need to see that it is repaired, so it can be adopted with the adoptions on that estate. Because, you know, we, we haven't finished the job.
Hmm.
But yeah, there is a repair on there that we're going to carry out, hopefully in the next week or two. I'm not sure about where the adoption situation is with highways though, but we can find out.
I did give maps to the office, Lee, of the areas which are likely to be adopted in the, and that might give you a clue if you, you have those maps, which I got from the developer. So it might be worth looking at those maps. That area seemed to be an area which was, when I originally had the conversation with the now retired officer Graham Smith, that area was going to be adopted because it's highway area where the actual slope is pitched. It's not to do with the developer. And we had to get the highways permission to do it. The only people who wanted to stop it was Alderweireld District Council at the time, for some reason. And we managed to get over that, thanks to Buckinghamshire County Council in the end, didn't we?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, item five budgets, 5.1 to receive the latest budget figures. Appendix B.
Clarify, whilst the first sheet on appendix B is correct, as per the email I sent around this afternoon, you have got the wrong report in your pack. So you have the TCE report that has circulated the environment figures this afternoon for information.
Yeah, thank you. Is everyone happy with the latest budget figures? And then councillor Harvey.
Are you going to go through it page by page, as, as usual? Or do you want us to?
No, I don't, I don't usually go page by page. I just ask people to raise anything they wish.
Okay, page three then.
Yeah.
Lace Hill repairs and maintenance.
Yeah.
Can we just clarify again what that's for? Because it's showing 165.3% overspend. Is this the, is this the intruder alarm business?
No, so there were, there were some additional repairs needed to, well, we've got three boilers up there, two, two heat and one water. And all three of them needed with some repairs. There was various different things, issues wrong with all of them. So there was a combination of that. And there was a new panel needed on the far alarm as well. So they've also all sort of come at once, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything else anyone wants to raise? Then item 5.2 to receive the revised budget forecast with the impact of Covid-19. That's E8520. Councillor Stutbury.
Well, chairman, these figures are going to keep changing, aren't they?
Yeah.
This Covid budget, really, we should do a proper in-depth discussion of that closer to precept and maybe note them for this evening.
Yeah. And item 5.3 to receive and discuss a written report proposing the draft budget for 2122 and the revised draft five-year budget.
Sorry, Chair, can we just go back a second? The appendix B that I've got refers to the explanation differences in the budget. I don't have another appendix B.
No, I'm not talking about appendix B. We're on E8620. 5.3 at the moment.
Right, sorry, I'm getting confused now.
Councillor Stutbury.
I, I think it would be useful if the town clerk could put the budgets that he sent out by email on screen. Because I've got two computer screens open here, and one set of papers. And if I close down the screen, which has got these emails in, I won't be in the meeting. And the budget that he sent out, we could just put them up on the screen. Because he sent new figures out today because of the printing error that the events budgets were printed in the agenda. I think that's probably would be the way forward. But that, if, if, if I'm wrong in my assumption, please correct me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just a point of order. E8520 is described on the actual report as the draft budget 21 to 27. But on the, on the, on the actual agenda, it says revised budget forecast bracket Covid-19 impact. Covid-19 impact is not mentioned in the report. And, and I'm now confused as to, we're not looking at, what we've seen before is an amendment to the, to the budget according to Covid spends and, and reduction in the spends. That's not what E8520 is all about, I think, isn't it? That's more about looking forward in terms of the next five years. That's what it's described as.
Okay, so I think, I think this is a numbering thing. And I think on the budget, so there are, there are four reports. Under appendix B, it's the one spreadsheet with the summary of differences on the budget. And then it's the income and expenditure report. For that one, I said to TCE, we've just talked about the environment one. And then there are two more reports. There's a budget forecast, and there's the draft budget. And I keep swizzing up and down. I think that they're different ways round in the agenda pack.
Yeah. Yes, they are. That's what's confusing.
So, so one's late. So it's forecast and then draft budget in the pack, but on the agenda, it's the other way around.
Yep.
So you should be confused. My apologies.
Right in the printed agenda.
Yeah, there's an E8620, right down below all the five-year projections, which has numbers in red, which I assume has to do with Covid-19.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, okay. It would help if that said Covid-19 on the title of the report.
It says in summary, though.
Chair, should we do the budget forecast first? Because that might.
Yes, please. Yes.
So if we talk then about the one that in your pack is called E8620, the important thing, it's called revised budget forecast for 2021. And now councillor Harvey pretends that's got lots of red ink down the side. I have changed its name away from mentioning Covid, because actually, there's a lot of other bits of budget forecast in there now, which aren't just related to Covid. Because as we get closer to the end of the financial year, hopefully it starts to get a bit more accurate. That, obviously, that comes with a massive health warning, given that this is early December. And it does feel like anything would happen in the next three months. But there are elements in here which are definitely not Covid. Well, they are kind of Covid related, because everything has a positive effect, isn't it? I think that one of the key changes would be on the, there's, but there's various bits of underspend which do kind of add up. Lace Hill Community Centre income, currently forecasting at 12,000, income, I think the actual figure is about 9,000 at the moment. So that's not impossible. Although obviously, if we go into tier three any time soon, then that we might not achieve that anyway. And on the cemetery figures, so 253, so on page four of that report, item 253, new cemetery repayments. Obviously, we won't repay anything on Saturday this year because we won't borrow the money. So that takes £37,000 off the expenditure for the year. Which is part of the reason why the overall underspend for the council will go up.
Thank you. Councillor Stutbury.
Just going back to the last statement the town clerk made. Clearly, those monies that we're not underspending, are we going to be earmarked reserving those monies? Because we pre-setted for it. And because of the five-year trip through planning, Covid, difficult situation, that we started behind, because by the time we got into the, the town clerk starting to plan all this work, we were very soon into Covid. So we haven't been able to do any of the consultation around borrowing the public money. There's a big question all around that, and a great conversation which we haven't had. But there are procedures we have to go through now, which I think, am I correct, town clerk, you're going to bring back a future report about that? Because.
Well, yes, the, the, the next report does refer back to the next report does give us the draft EMIC reserves for next year. So when we get to the bottom of the next report, that, that money does feature in there, which is recommended to be EMIC reserve.
Marked in bold.
And any more questions?
None of the figures are that concerning, apart from this question of Covid. They're all, they're all going to be in line with what we would do normally.
Yeah.
It's just the Covid question, which we can't answer. The town clerk's right, it's one of the, we don't know, do we?
Yeah. So we're happy to receive the revised budget forecast and also the five-year budget.
Yep.
Thank you.
No, no, sorry, Chair, we're doing one item at a time. The five-year budget, we've got something else to discuss on. I'm sure the town clerk wants to say a few things about it.
Well, couldn't the chairman chair the meeting?
Obviously not with John button in.
I'm trying to help.
Town clerk, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So on the draft budget paper, which is the one that says, well, budget 2021 to 27. This is slightly different to the version we had before. So just to highlight the differences, that the budget overall, overall for salaries have dropped from 2% to 1.1, which I think is probably still slightly more than we'll end up with the national agreement on when we get to a national agreement. But that's kind of the top end of what I think might happen. We have the overall issue for the council, which we'll talk about more resource in precept, that the council tax base is going down next year. So that means for council, we have to make that choice between, do we increase council tax to keep the budget the same? Or do we drop the budget to so in line with everybody who's having the same level of council tax next year, given the economic climate for everyone? Now, I'd suggest that's not a detailed discussion for this meeting. This budget is prepared in draft to enable that to happen. I've highlighted there for you the key changes. So we've got the lace hill sports pitches. I've reduced the estimated cost of new cemetery payments by making it a 30-year rather than 25-year loan estimate, and actually, yes, and that's all. There's been an overall national review of public work, loans, board loans. And there's been a national decision to reduce the cost of those slightly. So that's also helping with the budget for next year to make it a ladder. And there is, as I've already suggested, I'm recommending a much larger number of EMIC reserves for next year, because we do have more than is recommended in the general reserve, and a lot of work that we need to get done. So it seems appropriate to match those things together.
Councillor Stutbury.
Yeah, and that, that follows from what the town clerk gave us a report of the Finance Committee to councillor Smith's committee about the way that the auditor was looking at the accounts and the fact that the way we should do our accounts, and using EMIC reserves was an acceptable way. In, in the way we were doing it, we're putting it into reserve, wasn't. And we have to be more precise in our accounting of it. He gave us a report on that. But the, still coming back to the question of the accounts, they are what they are. And, and we will pre through the precept in councillor Smith's resources committee, where we will, we will review all of these properly, before they go to council. This is just the committee, are we happy with the accounts going to that meeting, which will be pre-thrued? And then it will go to full council precept. So it's going to have two more goes at this. And I'm sure that when we get to resources, that's the time to discuss this. This isn't a precept meeting. Is, do we feel the budgets are, through you, chairman, satisfactory enough to go to that meeting?
Councillor Harvey.
Item 314 and second line of 4.1 needs correcting. The town clerk knows I spotted those earlier on. We didn't do an underspend of 617,000. It was, was it, you said in the email, 170?
100, 100 instead of 600.
So I think it just, I think when these go back into our archive, we need to make sure that the sentence in 314 is, is, is full. And that the item second line is corrected before we put them into our archive, I think.
Absolutely. Okay, are we ready to move on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, Buxton Oxon 4.4x4 Response Group. And we've got two members here wishing to speak. So can we agree to drop standing orders so that they can speak?
With Ben standing orders, chairman.
Thank you.
Do you want me to say something initially, Chair?
Yes, certainly.
So, so just to say that we were approached by BORC a few weeks ago, with the offer to help the council in the flood plan, but also any other activities we do, such as events. They've already come to agreement with Aylesbury Town Council. They've got a very longstanding relationship with, well, the organisation previously known as Buckinghamshire County Council. And members have received by email a proposed MOU. It's not with the papers, because confidential document is what people's contact details in. So the proposal is really to accept that and see how else we can work together. But Simon Simon may have more helpful things there.
Thank you, Paul. So for, for the meeting, you've got myself and, funny enough, another Simon. We are the emergency planning liaison officers for Buxton Oxon 4x4 Response Group. And we are looking to make links and build MOUs and relationships with local councils. And as Paul has already said, we do, and have had a longstanding with Buckinghamshire Council in their resilience team. And we're now looking to try and build on that with the local councils. And because we feel that the local councils are now, certainly under the, the merge, are taking on a lot more of what was originally going through the resilience team. So we want to make sure that we're available when people are aware that we're here and we can help you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Councillor Stutbury.
Well, thank you firstly for coming. And, and I am aware, though I'm not knowledgeable about what you do, because that'd be the wrong way round. One of the things which you premised in you is about flood and alleviation and being able to get people here there. And that was something you, you talked about, wasn't it? And we are short of four-wheel-drive vehicles for defence, getting people anywhere. We've been fortunate, we haven't had anything substantial since 2007, and long may that remain so. But Buckingham is a huge, in danger of flooding. We've, we've seen it plenty of times. That's something which would be interesting, in my view, to discuss what role you could play. Because getting people from one place to another, or resources, or sandbags, and type of stuff, volunteers on the ground. We've got, I don't know how electric vehicles work in the water. We've got some electric vehicles now. I don't know how they deal with water. Wherever you go into a puddle, they stop. But, but there will be some need for that. And I think that's something which could be looked at modeling. Though we don't do, we're not the flood authority, we have worked in the past with a plan of action. And, and back in the days, we used to keep sand and stuff for sandbags and things to alleviate. Now, since then, other things have happened. But that's something worth looking at. And from my point of view, because not to look at it would be wrong, and then not be able to do anything at the time would be wrong. That's something I think you, you've offered, which is good. Thank you.
Councillor Gaetley and then councillor Smith, and then councillor Harvey.
Thank you. Well, what you're offering sounds really good. Having been on the previous Thank you. Well, what you're offering sounds really good. Having been on the previous flood action group and being aware of some of the practicalities, it sounds really good to have somebody a step away from the actual town. However, if and when Buckingham does have another flood sufficient to need your services, there will be other areas in Oxfordshire and Buckinghamshire experiencing similar difficulties. And I just wondered, on a practical level, are your volunteers tasked for a particular town situation or river situation? Or would they then be spread too thinly to cope when more than one town or river area needs that kind of assistance?
So if I may come back, our members currently, we have 47 members spread across the whole of Oxfordshire and Buckinghamshire. And we also manage our members through a online control system, which also helps us manage their welfare, manage their time, and ensure that we have the coverage across the whole of the two counties. I have this conversation quite regularly with Buckinghamshire Council about are we able to cope with the numbers? We don't specifically turn around and say, you are going to go and work in Buckingham, you are going to go and work in Aylesbury. And we will pull people from wherever they are to where they're needed. But the team are experienced enough that if they need three vehicles and we've sent five, two will be relieved. So the team will always have that contact with control. So we do have externals, me being one, that run as an external control, so we don't go onto the ground.
Okay. Councillor Smith.
Thank you. I'm certainly quite happy to accept the recommendation as it stands on the order paper. But I do think that in amending the emergency flood action plan that we've got, we ought to bring it back to this committee, perhaps at the next meeting, just to ensure that it is as up to date as it possibly could be. I'm thinking particularly of the need for refuge centres. I know the community centre is listed on one. I'm not sure if Lace Hill's Community Centre is, which is probably a more appropriate place because it's not near the flood plain. So I would be happy to support the recommendation. I have every faith in Borg being able to manage its own resources in an appropriate manner, but I do think we ought to revisit our own flood action plan.
Councillor Harvey. And then councillor Ralph.
Yeah, I fully support this. That's great. Thank you for making the offer. I think it's a great use of resources for the public good. My only reluctance is as a Trekkie, adopting a pact with the Porg is a little bit a step too far, but in this instance, I will accept it.
Councillor Ralph.
Thank you Chair. Can I preface Murray's next remarks with the fact that I'm very much in favour of this? Nevertheless, I noticed it's called a memorandum of understanding, and there are financial implications about paying costs and what have you. Consequently, I see this effectively as a contract, and I couldn't see anywhere where there are any exit clauses for either party, which is fairly normal in a contract. If I'm away with the fairies on this one, do tell me, but it did occur to me.
So if I can just, sorry, if I can just jump back on to that for you.
Yeah.
So the memorandum of understanding is not seen as a contract, and it does state in there that it can be ended by either party at any time. The financial side that you're talking about is the expense of fuel expenses for our members. And we do not gain anything off of that. That is purely paid at the going rate given by the given by the government. Currently, that stands at 45p a mile. And if you look at other places or other groups, certainly some of them will charge you a pound, two pounds a mile. And we don't. We charge you the 45p a mile, which is purely given straight back to our members to cover their cost of A, the vehicles being run, but also the fuel and so on. So I'm sure you can imagine, the vehicles aren't the cheapest to run on the road.
Councillor Stutchbury. You're on mute.
Firstly, I'll second councillor Smith's proposal that we agree the report. But lastly, I think we have to make the observation, which Buckinghamshire doesn't always make the observation. We have three or four catchment areas of water in Buckinghamshire. When the Thames is flooded, it doesn't mean the Uzes. And I think it's, there's two rivers, which I can't think of their names, one in Aylesbury and one in Wickham, which are completely different rivers. They've all got their own catchment areas. So it's often been the case that Marlow's been flooded and we've not been, and it's always sometimes been the reverse, that we've been flooded and Marlow isn't, and then nobody really recognises flooding in Buckinghamshire because Marlow hasn't been flooded. So I think having someone who's looking at all of these areas, catchment areas, is a good thing because it's an extra form of monitoring, isn't it? And but I do think it offers a conversation about the working after we agree, how it's going to work, needs to take place after agreeing the recommendations.
Right, we'll reinstate standing orders so that we can make those decisions. And we've got a proposal. The recommendation has been proposed and seconded, and then councillor Smith asked whether the emergency flood action plan could come to the next meeting, which seems a sensible idea. A member's happy with that?
Great.
Yep. And can we all agree the recommendation then? All those in favour, please show. I think that's everyone. Yes, thank you very much. And thank you for coming to our meeting, Simon and Simon.
No worries, Paul Levy too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye. Right, item seven is the motion that I put on the agenda, knowing that Andy Savage was coming to the meeting. So I wanted us to have the opportunity of having the motion on there, because otherwise we wouldn't be able to make any decisions or look into it. Would anyone like to? Lisa, councillor Donoghue.
Thank you. I'd be happy to second your motion, Chair. It's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is councillor Smith.
Yeah, I'm very happy to support this. I was quite disappointed that the earlier proposal involved with the town law mill all those years ago, when we, I think it was
Green Buckingham Group.
Buckingham Day, but it also came apart from a couple of the guys that I was, it came about by a couple of the guys that I was mentoring with the business school. So I feel quite close to this in a way. I'm a little bit surprised that, I think the Town Clerk reported that the university were unaware of this, when they were in fact heavily involved. Perhaps it was the predecessor. But yes, I'm very happy that we look further into all this and see whether we can, we can take any of it in any form further forward.
Thank you. The councillors in agreement of the recommendation, sorry, motion.
Chair, just make one suggestion.
Yes, of course.
Just note, just following conversations today, I note that the wording of the motion is that town council investigates the possibility of feasible to be set at appropriate sites in the town council's ownership. And I wonder whether that might be a bit vague, given that we might want to renew a conversation with the university with those with Boreham Mill. So if we could be, maybe take out the words in the town council's ownership at this point. Obviously, we're very cautious about funding it not in our ownership, but we might.
So we can put sites in the town and then take out council's ownership. I'm happy with that amendment. Are you happy with that Lisa? Thank you. Can everyone please show if they're in agreement with the amendment and the motion?
Yeah, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Item eight, there's a motion proposed by me and seconded by councillor Gaetley. And although this has come up before with the Buckingham Society, we had a discussion about it at the recent tree wardens meeting. And you've all got the wording of it there. Before, we were concerned about Mays-Morton Avenue because the gardens in Highlands Road has gone so far back, and if you walk along there, you'll see they're all in different places. It's made it really narrow at that top end, and we did try to ask the school to move their boundary, because originally the school didn't have a fence there. Because we were looking at having that as a cycle away from the Mays-Morton development, but it's so narrow at that end with the big trees there as well. And we'd also noticed, Margaret mentioned it, and I'd noticed it as well, and brought it to the attention of Neil Pasmore. Down the Mays-Morton Plainfield side, people have gone outside their boundaries, removed trees and shrubs and put up new hedges substantially away from their boundaries. And then we've also had the issue over the years of people putting in gateways when they don't have access from there through the back fences. And on the railway walk, I know we used to have problems on the scenic walk with garden waste being dumped over people's boundaries into the railway and scenic walk. So we've put together this motion for the town council to work with Buckinghamshire Council to protect public land for the benefit of all and to stop illegal land grabs and dumps. Councillor Stutchbury.
Firstly, thank you for putting the motion on councillor Neil and councillor Gaetley. I have listened to the conversation, and this has been an historically evolving situation of land perhaps being inappropriately obtained. I think the legal responsibility for sorting this out really rests with the new Buckinghamshire Council, because some of those areas of lands are in their ownership, and you would imagine that they would want to protect ownership of their own property. But I think the idea of working with them, if we are the person who provides the information for them, what we can't do is undertake their legal responsibilities, which is to defend their ownership. So I haven't got all the maps in front of me of Page Hill particularly, because that was one of those estates which dates back to the days of the Borough Council, which was probably the last one the Borough Council actually approved, before it went over to the District Council, which no longer exists either. So we really need to at some point look at the maps, because I'm aware of everything that's said and the areas that's said, but the specifics, you need to be on the ground, looking at it to know it, and also I need to look at them. I need to see the maps to see where the original line was in the development map and where the line is now, so we can produce the evidence to suggest to Buckinghamshire Council that they enforce their ownership. Of course, the District Council was always in the habit of selling odd bits of land off at any given point in estates. So there may be some of that as well. But I'm quite supportive of the motion, Chairman.
Yeah, councillor Smith, and then councillor Harvey.
Yes, I'm very much in support of it as well. In fact, it was only a week or two ago that I referred another case of what appeared to be attempted land grab to councillor Stutchbury, which had been referred to me by a friend of ours. I'm not sure it's going to be down to us to, or the town council, to actually work out where these things are. But it certainly does need an on-the-ground survey of some sort. And I'm not sure that the town council, our town council staff are resourced to do that. But it is certainly an issue, and it has been for a number of years. And I'm aware of some attempts at land grabbing by people on the Emberton Way estate, backing on to the bypass as well. And that came to our attention three or four years ago, I think. But I'm not sure what the outcomes were. So yes, I generally support, very supportive of the proposal. But I'm not really sure how we can carry it forward from a staffing point of view.
Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, I mean, thanks for raising this. Certainly when I've walked up and down Mays-Morton Avenue, I have always wondered just whether those fences are closer than they used to be. So it's nice to have it confirmed that I wasn't going mad. I do think, though, that some people probably aren't aware that they, one, shouldn't be putting gates into their back, into their back fences in the way that lots of people do. I've seen them in lots of places. And secondly, some of the law about land grabbing, as we're calling it. And I wonder whether the town council should be putting out a press release just to let people know that actually if you've done this, you could be, you could have been breaking the law in terms of land ownership and so forth. So I think it's worth us, I think, getting on the proactive foot to let people know. But I agree with all the words that have been said so far, we have no enforcement powers here. And if the land's not ours, there's not much we can do either. But I think, you know, within the resources that we have, I think we can do to nudge Buckinghamshire Council to take action on this is worthwhile doing, because, you know, we've got to make sure that these public spaces are protected.
Thank you. Councillor Donoghue.
Thank you. I did raise this at planning last week after you sent your email to me.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And we agreed that we would send to enforcement the points, the ones that you pointed out. So we have taken that quite seriously in planning. So yeah, I'm totally supportive of your motion, Chair.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak? Councillor Stutchbury.
Just for maybe whether it's an agenda item, whether whichever this goes to planning, maybe if it's an enforcement issue, that we pursue it for that one. But the maps, at some point, having the ownership, the maps of where they are, just so we can just look at where the point in the ground was originally and where it is now. What we can't do as a council is go around accusing people of doing things erroneously. We have to be sure of our facts if we start pointing fingers at people, because that's, you know, there's always accusations. That's not the nice way of doing things. We have to be really sure of our facts. I think we do need to see the maps.
Yes. Thank you. Rabina.
I just want to say, maybe we could do some sort of like social media campaign to say that, you know, these are the issues that need rectifying about land grabs, you know, dumping things, increasing hedges on to public land, so on. And let people know that they're actually breaking the law, because some people might be doing it, you know, without realising what they're doing is illegal. So it's almost giving them a bit of a chance to rectify things if they, if they're so willing to do before, you know, going in with a more heavy-handed approach.
Yeah. Councillor Donoghue.
Thank you. I wondered if we ever had anything in our newsletter, Buckingham What Matters publication about this? Because along the lines of the social media, perhaps we could have an article in there as well.
Yeah, good idea. Councillor Stutchbury.
I just would think that what we need to do is, I think if we can, we can establish from the maps that there is something to question, I think going along what Rabina says is the right way, a reminder about this is where the land things are, and maybe use the original maps as part of that press release, so that everybody knows where the original land area was. What we shouldn't do is until we can establish that, because we have no legal ownership of this land. It's presumably in the ownership of the Buckinghamshire Council. And if it is in the ownership of Buckinghamshire Council, they have the legal obligation to enforce it. But I don't think, we've got to be careful we don't overguilt. But I don't think, we've got to be careful we don't overgill our position in this because we aren't the legal authority in any way. And if someone then said, you've accused us of doing something and it turned out that we'd made a false accusation, they'd probably come back at us. So we have to be pretty sure of what we're doing and use the matrix of the Buckinghamshire Council, but they've got, they've got lawyers on call. We have to aid for them.
councillor Gately and then councillor Mahi.
Yeah, thank you. Just, I think I would personally be extremely interested to see those old maps, but a note of caution because I think somebody else did mention the possibility that people could have bought extra bits of land. So we need to make sure that in looking at the old maps, we also check anything that's happened in the meantime in terms of ownership of that land.
councillor Mahi.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. What councillor Donoghue was suggesting was not finger pointing, just like a warning shot in the Buckingham What Matters that we are looking at land grabs and start a softly, softly approach from that end and then see what happens and what comes out of the woodwork.
Thank you. Okay. So are we happy to agree the motion but take into account the softly, softly approach and publicising it, all the things that people have suggested?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Can you, can we have a show of hands again, please? Thank you. That's unanimous as well. Okay, item nine, the motion proposed by councillor Stutchbury. I think I seconded it, didn't I?
Correct, you did. Though it doesn't actually say it on the agenda. It just says proposed by me, it doesn't say that you seconded it, which is unfortunate.
But I am happy to second it anyway.
The fact is that the legislation's changed in 2026 about footpaths, rights of ways and accessibility. Buckingham's got a large curtish going outside of Buckingham and if any one of us knows all the footpaths, congratulations because I wouldn't. I knew all the footpaths where I was born, but not all the footpaths in Buckingham. One of the things we have to be sure of is by the time we get to 2026, that the residents have discussed this and that they, and footpaths that they use, which have been in use for years, are on the map. Now, we could go back to Buckinghamshire Council and ask them for the up to date maps and wherever it is, but outside that, we've got to remember that Covid has probably taught us something about the importance of footpaths and the rights of ways and people have used them far more now to get to places never would have done in the first place because they've had the time to use them to walk safely away from other people. So we've got access to Stowe, Thornborough, access to Padbury, access out to Gorka, there's footpaths across all those pieces of land and even going back to Racklive and going back towards Tindray. Now, I think we do, and Gorka, we just need to make sure that those areas, we're having discussion about it, that the people bring forward where they are. How we proceed as a council is our job as the local councils to see that they're open. I'm always minded to the fact that my weekends as a boy of seven, was spent every weekend going out with my late father and mother, cutting barbed wire and tying it back and making sure the footways were open. And my mother was a councillor at the time and making my poor father put bridges in and styles in in his spare time off, his one day off from the farm. So we've got history in this and if we lose our rights of way past 2026, they won't be there for the future generations. And the government's put this legislation in for good or for ill and we need to be ensured that we protect this for all the residents, all the future residents and the future people who want to use these rights of way.
Yeah. Great. councillor Harvey.
Very happy to second the motion, obviously.
I've already done that.
Oh, sorry. I'm just confused a little bit about why we're doing Stowe as well, given it's not in our parish.
If I explain to John, when you people used to navigate in times gone before motor cars and even before the people had horses, the way that people galloped from one village to another was through the footpath. Now, we have access up to the boundary of ours, to the boundary of the U.K. parish. By simply flagging up our part of the footpath, it will jog the minds of the adjacent parish. And if we jog the fact that it's an open footpath so we can get access to the other parishes, then the other parishes surely will. I've done rights of way many years and these things are presumably mapped and continuously contested. So I'm not saying we do Stowe's work, I'm just saying the extent of the travel, what we go outside. What we can do, councillor Harvey, by raising this is maybe stimulate a debate in the other parishes to be as proactive as we would want them to be, you know. It's do it now or lose it really, isn't it? You know, the Ramblers fought for this. It was a great big thing in the 30s to actually get access to it and there's a long history behind the way of national parks and the right to roam. So this is a big, long history to this and 2026 could see the end of that.
councillor Harvey and then councillor Smith.
Yeah, I just think we, I mean, absolutely, we should be liaising with Stowe Parish, but also all the other neighbouring parishes too. I just think, you know, if we're going to do this, let's do it properly. Let's do it, let's do all that we can cover within our own parish and then use our influence to nudge our neighbouring parishes to do likewise, including Stowe, of course, but also Racklive, also Gorka, also Thornborough and also, of course, Mays-Morton and so on. You know, all of those parishes deserve to be nudged by us and we can, you know, the footpaths will cross the boundaries and at that point we can alert, alert the parishes. Because as you point out councillor Stutchbury, there are some great walks around here and I've walked to all those places in recent times and had a great time.
councillor Smith.
No, I was just going to draw attention to the fact that our footpaths probably do butt into other parishes and we would need to bring them on board as well.
Okay. Okay. Is everyone happy to agree the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Nearly unanimous. Oh, it is unanimous, thank you councillor Ralph.
Could I ask for you, chairman, that we do a press release round this to give it some impetus? And if our heroes who write the magazine can put something into the town council magazine that we discussed it and give a little bit more detail, because if we don't publicise this, all the knowledge in Buckingham doesn't rest within this council. There'll be people like, when we discuss rights of way, councillor Ashen was always brilliant for local information about Buckingham, wasn't he? That none of us knew because he was a born and bred boy in Buckingham. There'll be people out there who can help us.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, item 10. HASK the 7th of January 2021 to discuss and agree written questions under representative for the next meeting of the HASK scrutiny committee. councillor Harvey.
Yeah, I just, I circulated a suggestion for what the question, the question could be.
Yes.
I'm now trying to find it and I can't find it.
Yeah, I do remember seeing it.
Yeah, my suggestion was that Buckingham Town Council notes that, quote, this is quoting an NHS England website, "Two community hubs are being polluted in Marlow and Tame. Help patients take greater control over their care and treatment and avoid hospital admissions as part of plans to establish a ICS across Bucks. Please can HASK explain whether it'll be one of the ICS priorities to establish something similar with the Buckingham Community Hospital within the next five years? And moreover, how will the introduction of the ICS across Bucks noticeably affect the lives of Buckingham people and how will the Buckingham people be able to have a say about all of this?"
Yeah.
That's my suggestion for a question that we send to the HASK.
Yeah. And I'd like to propose that Margaret is our representative and as she offered at the last meeting. councillor Gately, councillor Smith and councillor Stutchbury.
Thank you. I am willing to be our representative. I think my question is whether there's somebody who's more qualified and experienced in these issues who might be better to attend, but you know, I say I'm happy to go, but I'm happy for somebody else who's, who knows more about it than I do to go.
Okay, and councillor Smith.
Well, I'm certainly happy for councillor Gately to attend and I'm happy to support the motion from councillor Harvey.
And councillor Stutchbury.
I think councillor Harvey drafted a good question. I think one of the things that we have to ask is, they discussed at the last HASK meeting about community health stroke care hubs and the way it was going to work in Aylesbury and where it's going to work in Wickham. Whether it's this HASK meeting or the next one, because the timeline's very short, I think we do have to ask what they are going to do about community hubs as a written question to them, as they consulted with Buckingham in 2018 and they never came back to give us a report on what they were doing. I provided the short information to that, to the town clerk this afternoon on the daytime and the evidence of the meeting and what was, it was about. I think a short question that you consulted on community hubs in 2018, please can you advise us what your plans are and how you're going to progress that in Buckingham? I don't think it needs to be any longer than that. That's one question which could be taken to the meeting because I think they won't know anything about it because most of the people sat on the HASK meeting wouldn't have been there at the last HASK meeting when they discussed it two years ago.
And councillor Harvey and then councillor Gately.
I prefer something more precise, councillor Stutchbury, in my view. If we ask a generic question, I feel we'll just get some flannel in return, is my thought. And I'm, that's why I phrase the question that I'm proposing in that way, to try and drill them down into exactly what, you know, to say, you know, will there be a change like Tame or Marlow in Buckingham within the next five years? If we leave it just general, they're going to flim flam flop around and we'll be none the wiser, in my opinion. The 7th of January, I have the morning committed but the afternoon free. I'm happy to step in if you wanted me to, Margaret, but I'm also happy for you to go as well. It is a subject I know something about, partly because it's part of my professional understanding, because I do work with Greater Manchester on commissioning and their integrated care, care system and so forth. And also Julie, my wife, is currently going through the merger of Bedfordshire, Milton Keynes and Luton into one single ICS as well. And obviously I've heard quite a lot about that from her perspective as well in terms of what its ambitions are. So I do understand what ICSs are and might be able to ask pertinent questions, but I'm also very happy for you to go as well, Margaret. I'm not trying to muscle in in any kind of way, but I can't do the morning, I could do the afternoon.
councillor Gately and then councillor Stutchbury.
Thank you. I just think what councillor Stutchbury was saying about community hubs is covered really within councillor Harvey's proposed question. I, I'm very happy to defer to councillor Harvey to attend the meeting because I think he has got the background that I don't have. I can't remember, have we been given a time on the 7th that the meeting's happening? I always look at practicalities, I'm sorry, it's one of my, one of the things I do.
Can I just, to that, chair?
Yeah.
Just in terms of the meeting, once we've submitted a question, then we'll be given a time. So I've got the details from the Democratic Service about the process. We wanted you to put a question when it comes to the process.
So we'll work out then whether John can go or Margaret can go. Yeah. councillor Stutchbury.
Just on the meeting, whichever way around the office has done it, usually it's, it'll be usually on that day, the health and scrutiny is in the morning or in the afternoon or the education and children's service is in the morning or the afternoon. They sometimes flip around. So it could be that that day it's in the afternoon, it could be it's in the morning. So I think it's appropriate that we have some of the morning and some of the afternoon because they do change round and I haven't looked at, I know I've got a meeting in January and it's usually on the same day at the HASK and I do write questions for HASK anyway. So, but for other people or assist them with their questions. So I won't be being done out of anything. Obviously my ones are a bit more Buckinghamshire wide.
Yeah.
But I think it's good that we've got two people wanting to go and that's a positive thing and both councils have got experience to bring. So we're well covered really, aren't we?
Yeah, we are. And a few councillors have spoken in favour of the question that John circulated to us all.
I'm no problem with it.
Are we happy for that to go forward? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So item 11, Tindray Road Green Spaces verbal update from the town clerk.
You'll remember that we spoke about this at the last meeting.
Yes.
The discussion's run hold because of the national restrictions. I've got a site meeting with Lee tomorrow with the local staff members, so hopefully we'll be able to report further progress next time we meet.
That's wonderful because we agreed this would be a standing item on our agenda, didn't we, at the last meeting? That's fine. Item 12, access awareness and you've sent us a copy of the Clarence Park ramped access that's got two steps on it, the curb and the other one up to the ramp and the letter that you've written.
And the verbal updates on that is that we had a very quick and very positive response back after papers had gone out, which was a holding response, but it did say they were taking it very seriously and would get back to us with a more detailed response, which they were actually doing.
Good. It's crazy, isn't it, to have that as a ramp? councillor Donoghue.
Thank you. I just wondered, does nobody come out and check these things before they're signed off? Like, do they, do they not have a site manager or project manager? Because I was stunned to see steps leading to a ramp. It's, it just is beyond ridiculous and I can't, I can't believe a company as big as they, they are, wouldn't have a site manager or project manager to sign these things off. Do you know, Paul? Oh, through you, through you, chair.
Absolutely, there should be a whole process for sign off between the developer and whoever is signing off too. Very much so. And the very detailed designs should be agreed in the first place.
Yeah. councillor Stutchbury and then councillor Harvey and councillor Strang Clark.
I did furthest the town clerk, this in correspondence to do with that whole area of open space that I'd taken up with an officer and it was quite interesting. They, it was the developer who decided who they wanted to do what and there was no discussion. I think that's something that we should bring back, that correspondence through a matrix of the town clerk. But this area, we've been here before, haven't we? A developer comes into Buckingham, a developer puts steps in and a developer creates a hurdle for people with disability. I mean, dajah view. So what it proves is all developers are burdened with the same mentality, doesn't it? That then when it comes to development, access is only for those with a wallet and not those with a wheelchair. So, and they demonstrate that without any prejudice. We've seen it in Leyes Hill, we spoke about earlier in the meeting, how we corrected that one. Heaven forbid, we're going to have to have a five year war with the developer to get this monstrosity corrected. It's not like they've got the problem. It's not like they've got the problem of moving traffic there or the space of land to not put a slope in. It was purely suggested it's an economic decision. And it should have been picked up, shouldn't it, by planning in the council at Buckinghamshire now, responsible for the Disability Olympics. And when it comes to them, they're never short of being in every photograph possible and taking all credit for that event, the torch fair and whatever. So I think we do need to push on this and maybe the developer will come back and put it right without too much of a fight. But I do think we need to be quite strong publicly about this. This is a second, you know, this is a repeat offence, different developer though. But I just, we shouldn't have to keep doing this, it should be done. It's despicable, isn't it? I was going to say something else, but I weren't.
Thank you. Councillor Harvey?
I think Christine was next, wasn't she?
No, I said you first.
Okay.
And then Christine.
Just to say that Christine reported this many years ago, she's probably just about to say that. And I reported it again back in June 2018, when they first, when they put it up and they took some photographs then. Because what isn't highlighted perhaps is that at the other end, there is level access, but to the steps. So they have level access to the steps and stepped access to the ramp. That's how bonkers this whole arrangement is. And you have to wonder about these site supervisors, what they're actually doing with their time and their access awareness. I mean, equally, I mean, obviously Badgers was built many, many years ago. I walked through Badgers the other day and noticed, just for the first time, because you don't always notice these things, is that a lot of the paths that cross between various closes have curbs at the end of them and not dropped, not dropped curbs. So in Badgers, it must be a real nightmare for people who are, you know, using wheels to get around, because they must come across many, many curbs that they cannot access, you know, many paths they cannot access through the estate because of the arrangement of all those curbs. So it's a problem in lots of places, but you'd have thought by now, in Clarence Park, which was built a few years back, that they've got it sorted, but clearly not. But great initiative to finally get this resolved. So thank you, town clerk.
Councillor Strang Clark?
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, councillor Harvey is quite right, you know. That is more or less what I was going to say, you know, because it's so long ago that I took photographs of this site. And it just makes you think, you know, what is the point of sticking up for disabled access? Because obviously, clearly, anybody who goes there can see that this is ridiculous. But, you know, then nothing happens, you know, for year on year and year. So I'm just pleased something may be going to happen now. So thank you.
Thank you. Item 13. To receive an agreed nomination to act as the town council's climate change champion to help raise the profile of the planned online event and the council's climate change emergency plan. I think this came from Town Centre and Events, part of the climate change emergency. Do we have any volunteers? Councillor Stutchbury?
I think you should do it, chairman, because out of all the councils on the town council, you have been a big campaigner for the environment from day one that you're on this council. You've been chair of environment for mainly committees, you've defended numerous things and you never stop ceasing defending the environment in Buckingham. And I think you make a good case without having to, in my opinion, to be. I think that it should be a dual role. And I think that you should be supported by your deputy so that you can share it. Because I think that gives it a steer from the committee. You've both been avid people and I think you'd shine when it comes to that. And any one of us pushing into that, I think, would be wrong. I'd like to pose both you and your deputy councillor Gaetley do it, because I think you've been admirable, both of you in the way you've conducted yourselves.
I am passionate about the environment, but I would very much like someone to support me as well because of, you know, sort of caring responsibility that I have at the moment.
But if I could just say, chairman, by proposing councillor Gaetley, I also think that if councillor Anthony Ralph was surminded, you could have support by two people with it, because we are evidently aware of what you say. But I don't want you to lose the mantle that you've created, which is every time since I've been on the council, anything to do with the environment, anything to do with the railway walk, anything to do with the fact that I get to paddle in the river, anything to do with the roundabouts, anything to do with planting trees, there was Ruth Neill leading it from the front. So I say this in all genuineness, I've watched you. But if we could have two people support you, and I propose councillor Gaetley and councillor Anthony Ralph, so they support you through this, but you are the, our champion.
Councillor. Thank you. Councillor Ahmed?
I would just want to say that I'd be really happy to support you, even if it's just completely in the background, not officially in front of anything. But if you need any support whatsoever, it's something I'm passionate about, well, climate change emergency. So if you need anything, just give me a shout and I will happily do whatever needs to be done.
That would be great. So it would mean that we'd have a sort of working group of us. Councillor Gaetley?
Yes, I think it probably would be helpful to have a few of us involved. But certainly speaking for myself, and I won't speak for the other names mentioned, councillor Newall is not only passionate about the environment, she has done a degree in ecology. So she's got a lot of the underlying knowledge that goes alongside her passion. And I think that knowledge would be really important, because she knows the underlying reasons for actions that need to be taken.
Well, thank you very much for everything that people have said.
So, chairman, are we agreed that councillor Anthony Ralph and the Gaetley would support you? And I think councillor Rabina as well, so that you've got people around you who can pick up,
Yeah.
pick up when you want them to.
Yeah.
You know I'll do anything you ask me to and probably get told off while I'm doing it. So, but I'll always support you. But I think it's appropriate that we sing your praises on this one, councillor Newall.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Ralph?
I'm muted.
Muted.
You're still muted.
Yeah, I know. I was having a little selection of the mice that are on my desk. Sorry about that. Yeah, Robyn's suggestion was a bit of a surprise, but I'm more than happy to be part of a working group with my colleagues here. And I think that's quite a good way of proceeding, in fact.
Yeah, I think so. I think we'll all get on very well and move ahead on the planned online event and the emergency action plan. Thank you very much. Are you all happy with that?
Yes, we were happy.
Thank you. Item 14, reports from affiliated groups. You've got the notes from the Buckingham Community Wildlife Project from the 7th of September, when we were due to have our last meeting and all the different groups sent in their reports. And we're hoping that by February we'll have a Zoom meeting. So, and we'll update you all again on those. But it is wonderful, all the work that's going on in Buckingham. And then 14.2, you've got the notes of the Buckingham Tree Wardens meeting that was earlier mentioned. And we're all volunteering to cover different areas of Buckingham and to note where trees should be planted and any trees that should have TPOs on them. And we'll be helping with tree planting as well. And item 15, the Upper Ouse Natural Flood Management Project update. You've got the appendix F and to receive a verbal update from the town clerk and the estates manager.
Thank you, Chair. So I'll say what I think that there will be a good interview. You may remember this is a scheme which is funded through S106 money that was pretty much rushed through to make it happen before the S106 money ran out and they've got a two-year project. Two-year project. Myself and Lee have both been alternating between steering group meetings. It's been significantly delayed by Covid. The last meeting I attended, which was about a week ago, they have set some new milestones which are quite challenging to get done between now and February to start to make some real progress with the scheme. You'll notice included in your appendices for it is a letter that says, Dear councillor. So that's very much an invitation to any of you who would like to contact them, either to talk through the project, to talk about your contacts along the river. You may take the view it's disappointing that this far into the project, they're still going around to contacting councillors to ask if there's any contacts on the river where they are, where they are. Lee, I think you're, is it an impressive item on progress?
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping that there'd be a lot further on than they are with it. They were awaiting some data from the EA so that they could progress doing the survey. But unfortunately, it sort of seems a bit slow. So I think me and Paul have sort of agreed to keep a very close eye on it. And if there isn't any progress with it at the next meeting, things really need to move on. Because it could, there is a potential to do masses of work sort of upstream of Buckingham that could potentially do loads of good. But the aim of this was to do sort of almost like a feasibility study and try and find what needs to be done really, and then set out and try and do, start doing it. And even from that, if they don't achieve it, the information is there that we could, or anyone could go and pick it up and start doing stuff. So we must admit, we were sort of hoping it would be a bit further, but we're going to keep a really close eye on it now and then. And try and push things along if we, as far as we can, sort of thing, really.
Yeah. Councillor Stutchbury?
I was just curious with their map. It doesn't show the three possible sources of the Ouse. It actually ends before Hamedon, which is one possible source of the Ouse. And Stutchbury, village of Stutchbury is another. And that map doesn't seem to be big enough for the catchment area of the Great Ouse. But I think it's a start. The work they could do up there, which would stop the water coming to Buckingham is correct ditches and everything else. But anyone who knows how important this is. When we flood in Buckingham, it's not because it rains, it's because it rains in Northamptonshire over the catchment area. The water falls on this catchment area, which I think is probably 60 to 40 square miles of water and feeds into the Ouse. But then the water passes over Buckingham and drops into the Twins. It's when it comes in that direction and the Twins flood downstream. And that's why the Ouse floods twice, once from Brackley and once from back up through the town. So this work is important, because if we could just get a percentage of that water to be retained in Northamptonshire, it wouldn't come through Buckinghamshire's front runes, would it? You know, and we just might win. But it's also about development, isn't it? We've only seen the amount of development going on, that every bit of development they do in Northamptonshire. If it runs, if it hasn't got its own alleviation and catchment areas in there, that water would end up in Buckinghamshire. And you've only got to go down to, if you want to see the crossover, go to To Western, one of the crossovers into the Ouse. Just go to To Western, right down into the village. You can walk under the bridge, follow the stream and the reed beds right up into Brackley. And you can see there that there's these little pinch areas which hold water in the marshy areas. And they're what stop the water coming to us. We lose those marshy areas for development or something else, or the trees are removed, then we're in real trouble. So we do need to be talking to Northamptonshire, because they'll save our bacon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. And item 16, news releases. We've talked about a couple of those during the meeting, haven't we? Councillor Stutchbury?
Can we agree that once the group have met about the online discussions, that they do a joint news release about that? And once you've done it, you've got where you are, can you just make sure that it goes on to the next events agenda to be updated? And maybe at that point, do a joint press release round it? I'm thinking we need to push on with that press release in the new year, because doing something now, it just won't really catch anyone's imagination with Christmas and everything else, it just will be lost. So it's something I think we should agree to do in the new year. And if we could have a preliminary conversation before the next events meeting and then do it straight after and come back and update the events committee how you wish to proceed. Is that okay?
Yeah. Councillor Gaetley?
Thank you. Can I just clarify which particular discussion you're talking about, Robyn?
Sorry, councillor Gaetley, that's my fault. Thank you for pointing it out. I was thinking about the environmental climate change project.
Yeah.
I was still back there when I said the group. I do apologize. Thank you, councillor Gaetley. I should have said what I was thinking about, instead of thinking that you could read my mind. Thank you.
And the other news release, I remember councillor Harvey put something forward, didn't you? Yeah.
Yeah, it was about the land grabbing and the gates and fences and so on. Whether we did just put out a bit of public information, said, did you know that?
Yeah.
Just because your garden backs onto a wood, you can't just put a gate in it.
Yeah.
Or something like that. I mean, I'm not an expert enough to know what is and is not allowed. I thought you could. I had no idea that you couldn't put, honestly, I had no idea you couldn't put a fence, a gate in your fence if you wanted to, onto public land. But if that's the case, then people, there are plenty of people like me, I'm sure, who have no idea.
Thank you. And Chair's announcement, sorry, I was a bit grumpy at the beginning of the meeting. And I want to wish everyone a happy Christmas, because the next time we meet is in February.
Happy Christmas to you too.
And the date to the next meeting is the 15th of February.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy Christmas.